Four hundred years later, we're just asking that we all be treated the same as human beings. When we can do that, some folks will have more faith. Some folks will have their hope renewed that one day we shall overcome. When they tore down the walls in Berlin, they all came together on both sides singing that old civil rights anthem, "We Shall Overcome." What must we do? We simply ask to be treated just like you.
Okay, there's a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Because I believe the proposal that I put forth makes more sense, I vote no.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other no's? The motion carries with one no. Next item, please.
Mayor and counsel, a work session and an agenda item to consider has been placed on the agenda at the request of Councilmembers Getz and Neal. The work session is to review and discuss Ordinance 20-020 related to the Public Health Emergency Disaster Orders for the City of Beaumont.
Thank you. So are they handling them? Okay.
Yeah, I don't know what they're actually proposing, so.
Okay.
I'm in favor of taking the restrictions off, opening things back up.
Okay, like things?
Like the civic center?
You mean city venues?
What's that?
Are you meaning city? Okay, you're not talking about restaurants. What are you talking about?
Under state guidelines.
Okay.
And Mayor, you know, in talking to the Event Center staff, I understand that right now we have scheduled to open up the Event Center July 31st. Is that correct?
That is correct. That was in a memo from the city manager that was put on Facebook.
Right, so the problem would come, I believe, if we've told people that had weddings and receptions and things like that scheduled and booked during the month of July, and we've told them, no, you gotta cancel.
I'm not gonna call them and tell them.
And say, oh, King's Hex, yeah, you can go ahead. Here's your one week's notice to get your reception and stuff back together. Also, and this is kind of a question for city legal counsel, COVID is undoubtedly going to be with us past July 31st. And as we open these facilities up, we're going to have to put something, I believe, in our language of our contract to decide who is going to have the burden of making sure the requirements that the governor's promulgated are enforced, for instance. Or maybe even going above that. Are we going to have somebody required to scan temperatures as they go into these venues? So is it going to be a city person or is it going to be incumbent upon the person renting the facility? Is it going to be incumbent upon the person renting the facility to make sure that they are spread out properly or not? These are questions, Mr. City Attorney, would that be something that we need to modify in our lease agreements?
Before he answers, could I just make a suggestion?
Sure.
Okay, all right, so because I work with emergency management every day, this is something we have talked about, and we did have a meeting about this. And that's why the memo was put out that said that we would be opening up city venues on or after July 31st. We didn't put for sure July 31st. My suggestion to y'all that put this on today would be because that has already been put out there, that we stick with that date. But secondly, if we don't, I mean, if we do, I absolutely think that we need to not just jump into it. We need to think about all the repercussions, like what you say. Is it really going to be right to ask our staff to take temperatures, to make sure people are social distancing? I have the same thing with Harris County's deal on masks. I'm going to talk about that in a little bit. But to me, we have put that date out there, and this was a date that the management of the city decided, not the city council, but this is what they typically do, and they looked at every single department. I think the city manager told us that when we talked about this, is that not right, Kyle? When we first started talking about this. I can't see us going backwards from that date because if you had a wedding scheduled between now and July 31st, that you've already been told that it's going to be canceled.
Well, they can put that on us, though, Mayor, because as city council, we do have the ability to direct, to open things up. And here's my problem with this. People that are compromised with immune systems, hopefully, will know better than to attend something where there's going to be a lot of people. The governor has made a point that he's going to move towards opening up the state of Texas, and he's not retreated from that, even though we've had some increases in our COVID cases. But we would expect to have increases in our COVID cases because we continue to do testing, and as we do more testing, we're going to see more positive cases. The number that I'm keeping my eye on, the two numbers, is how's our death rate increasing? And it's staying, thank goodness, at about the same. You know, it's already been too high, but it's not increasing. And our hospitals, they're not being overrun. And those are the two things that I think are real, real important to look at. I think that we need to open up our city. I think that we need to let more people into our libraries. I think we need to have our community centers available for us to have neighborhood association meetings and anybody else wants to rent them. And I think people need to make wise choices as to whether or not they want to go out there and run the risk of being exposed. Everything needs to be done with social distancing and, you know, safe guidelines put into effect. My only question is, who's going to be the one that polices that? The city or the person that's renting the facility?
Well, and then what is the repercussion if they don't abide that as well? So there's more to it.
That too. That's fair. That's true.
So, I mean, I guess what I'm saying is, before we make a decision on something, I mean, every week, just about the governor has a press conference, and they give more guidelines. And I believe Ms. Wheeler will tell us that they are giving them some guidelines for venues, but they're stricter than those of restaurants. I mean, they're not like 75% like the restaurants are, correct? They're less. And so we're talking about less, and then as that changes, I feel like we would absolutely have to have it in the agreement that we make with the customer. And I don't see the city leasing it. But yet, it is our facility, so if they don't do it, what do we do?
Then we're responsible.
Yeah, but what do you do when you walk in the building here? Not temperature checking when you walk into City Hall?
Not into City Hall, but a lot of places are.
You go into the end of the court, municipal court?
But you're asked to social distance. That you're asked to social distance.
Are they? Okay, sorry.
And at the EOC. I think most every building except here, maybe.
But you don't temperature check.
The people that are coming here aren't staying.
To Walmart or into a church or anywhere else. So I mean, it's just because you come into a city facility doesn't mean you're going to catch the COVID.
So there was, someone told me that they went to an event not too long ago, and it was not at a city facility, it was at another facility. And you had to sign all kinds of things when you came in, that you were screened before you came in. And it was basically said you will not hold the facility liable if you contract COVID-19 by being there, because it could be possible. I mean, that's all things that I think we have to look at to protect the city. We can't just say we're going to open it up, in my opinion.
You know, and whoever's renting the facility can have that language in their contract with the city, and they can agree to hold harmless and indemnify the city for anybody that wants to try to make such a claim, if such a claim could ever be, you know, proven, which, you know, that's going to be hard to prove. Well, I was at that facility that night, and that's where I got it. You know, not when I was at the grocery store the day before, but that night, that's when it happened. You know, so that's going to be really a hard thing for people to prove, but.
Do y'all want to make a proposal to council about what you want to open up? And then we probably need to hear from Emily about what the guidelines are. That doesn't even mean council will accept that, but because I think that the city manager's done the right thing and left it up to us because.
My proposal would be to open up everything July 31st, with the exception of the Lakeside Center.
That's what I was just asking y'all to do. Thank you. That's what I thought I said.
No, you asked for a proposal, so I just made one.
Okay, all right. Because I don't think we can move it backwards.
That's fine.
I mean, I don't see us doing that. I'm okay with if you want to bring it up, but I don't see us doing it.
I'm okay with that.
But my other stipulation in that would be that depending on what happens and the governor's order and the different orders that come down. And I believe that even Harris County, if I'm not mistaken, has asked for an AG opinion on some of this stuff. Is that correct?
I'm not aware.
Okay, that was in the TML report that they put out yesterday. So we need to look at that because we are going to have to follow the state guidelines, obviously.
You know, but I'm okay with what Councilmember Neal just proposed. But on the libraries, summer's here, school's out. We're still, as I understand, allocating only 10 people at a time into the library, not including staff. That's far, far, far below the capacity of these libraries.
That's because that's what the governor's order said, but we need to look at the governor's order and see if he changed that yesterday. But the governor's order says no more than 10 people in a public facility, I believe, is what it says, in a meeting, in a public facility. Now, stores and retailers and restaurants are different. I know it's contradictory, but that is what it says.
If that.
So how do we have more than 10 at a meeting here?
The governor has this 66-page book that has all the protocols in it, and it lists by various types of facilities. He speaks to wedding venues, he speaks to libraries.
What does he specifically say about libraries, if you can?
I don't have libraries in front of me. I have wedding reception venues. I have people over 65. I got fine arts performance halls. But I don't have libraries. But he does speak to the numbers of people who can attend these various facilities. As an example, for fine arts performance halls, it says no tables of more than 10 people. Six feet of separation between other groups. And he has this kind of list for every type of facility.
So we can look at libraries and see what it says.
I really would like.
If it's different, we can change that.
Thank you.
But I was thinking it did say 10, unless he's changed it, because he did make some changes yesterday.
Well, for gyms and exercise facilities, individuals should avoid being in a group larger than 10. So in some instances, he does address the number 10.
So how about we do this? I mean, we're going to stick with that date, but let's continue to monitor the governor's orders. We can look and see what he said on libraries, just for that purpose, since it's summer. And then I think the biggest issue is the date because Ms. Wheeler, who's in charge of event facilities back there, do you disagree with anything I said? Did you want to move anything up? Because that date was something that y'all came up with as a staff, correct? Yes, and the city manager.
And Mayor?
You, yes, okay.
If the library dictate from the governor is that we can have more than 10, can we go ahead and do that sooner than July 31st?
I would say so. I think what we're trying to do is follow the governor's order. I wouldn't have an issue with it. But I believe that our understanding was 10 in the governor's order. That's why that was put in there.
Okay.
And like I said, it could have changed. As far as the other venues, there's more to it than just a public place. You know, you've got to monitor other people that are renting it. And so I think we have to look at that closer, too, as we move forward. And this will give us a little time to do that.
Good.
Okay? All right. Thank you very much. So we don't, we're gonna, we could, what is to vote on here? This is an action item, or do we need to at this point?
So, yes, ma'am, I need to read the ordinance.
Okay.
Item number seven is an ordinance entitled, an ordinance to the City of Beaumont, amending Ordinance 20-018 to amend the Public Health Emergency Disaster Orders for the City of Beaumont, opening certain city facilities, providing for separability, providing for a penalty, and providing for repeal. So if the council wanted to open definitively certain facilities on a certain date, then this would be the time to do it.
So if we're agreeing, other than libraries, we're going to look at that to wait till July 31st? What do we need to do today?
Whatever the two councilmembers are proposing.
So do we need to make a motion to open all facilities July 31st, with the exception of the Lakeside Center?
And per the state requirements?
Per the state requirements.
And I would like to amend that to open up libraries sooner, if the governor's order allows for that.
Per state requirements.
Per state requirement.
Okay. So Councilman Neal, do you make an emotion? Councilman Getz, you seconding that motion?
Yes, I am.
Okay, all in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Okay. That concludes number seven, and we now have a work session. Unless you don't want to have one. No, it's okay.
And it was raining a minute ago, too. Today, we're going to walk through, talk about the city's finances and the fiscal year 2021 budget process, which we're in the middle of. The administration's main objective has been and continues to be that first and foremost, we want to be in very good financial condition, which we are. Just this is a history of our fund balance. Some people refer to it maybe as a rainy day account. In essence, it'd be like a savings account at your house or within your household. Just wanted you to see where we were back in, say, 2001. This is our fund balance, fund balances in the general fund, which is the largest fund of the city, general operations. So over the years, it's grown substantially. Today, that estimate, about $46 million out of a $131 million general fund budget. Thirty-five percent of expenditures, which is very healthy. And again, that's today. That's before. We're going to talk about that in a minute. Before, we're going to come to you and ask you to transfer money to some other funds to shore them up before you vote on the 2021 budget, probably in September. So at the bottom, and I'll read it, there's some people that cannot see this televised meeting. A strong fund balance, a rainy day account, allows the city, we've learned, especially after Rita and Ike, that we can pay for our expenses during those emergency situations without relying on maybe the state or the federal government in the short term. And it also has allowed the city councils over the years to pay for one-time expenditures that you, the council, determined to be priorities. Previous councils authorized new community centers to be built with cash. Allowed some other one-time projects that necessarily weren't built into the budget to be paid for with cash. But, you know, out near the Willard Library, that community center was constructed with cash at Rogers Park, at Alice Keith Park, I believe at Central Park. So it just allows, again, you some flexibility. Go to the next slide, please. So there is some good news. Let you read that. The good news, our actual receipts last fiscal year were almost $46 million, and that's sales tax revenue. It's our largest source of revenue. And we budgeted for sales tax revenue to be down, turned out 8%. Why? Because we learned after Rita and Ike, and we knew after Hurricane, or let's just call it some tropical storms, Harvey and Amelda, that things would trend back to normal. So we budgeted, again, for sales tax to be a little over $42 million. So COVID has definitely had a negative impact on sales tax revenue, and we know it will for the unforeseen future. However, today, or through, sales tax receipts were received last week for April numbers, which we received again early June. So today, we're still $415,000 ahead of what we budgeted. So that's positive. And again, that's a lot of good fortune. Because again, we budgeted for it to be down for other reasons. Property appraisals. Good news that preliminary appraised values have increased 4.9% compared to last year's values. Again, those are preliminary numbers. There'll be protests. We definitely don't have the certified rule. So what that means is that could provide an additional $1.8 million to the general fund and $780,000 to the debt service fund. So that's, again, really good news from maybe where we were three weeks ago. And I'm going to ask Todd Semino to come forward. He's our CFO. He can tell you, you know that state law changed where it used to be 8% cap on appraised values, and then the legislation changed it to 3.5%. So he's going to walk you through how that will affect us, and then the legislature's done something as it relates to COVID, so.
All right, thank you, Mayor and council. I'm passing out a little summary of the tax law changes for the property tax rating setting, the property tax setting process. So everything changed for property tax rates beginning January 1st of this year. And to understand the changes, you need to be familiar with a couple of terms. So under the old law, we had a term called the effective rate. And that was a tax rate that we would use to generate the same amount of revenue as the prior year when you apply those taxes to the same property. And then we've had a rollback rate. The rollback rate was effectively the effective rate plus 8%. And if we adopted a tax rate above the rollback rate, then the citizens could petition for an election to approve that rate. As a side note, you should know as assessed property values increase, the effective rate decreases. So the new law came in and basically changed just the name of those two terms, the effective rate and rollback rate. As you can see, now the effective rate's called the no new revenue rate, and the rollback rate is now called the voter approval rate. But the voter approval rate no longer gets to use an 8% increase. It can only be increased by 3.5%. And so basically, if we adopt a rate that's anything above the new voter approval rate, then it's not subject to a petition for an election to approve that tax rate. It triggers an automatic election. So going back to our current assessed values, so currently, our property tax values are, you know, 4.9% above last year. Now, how much of these values are attributed to new property? I don't have that information yet. But for illustrative purposes, let's assume there's no new property on these tax rolls. That 4.9% increase is on same property. And it's not always the case because there's adjustments in the property tax calculation for sales tax fluctuations. But usually, a 4.9% increase in the assessed values translates to a 4.9% increase of revenues. So if that scenario holds true, what we could be faced coming up during this budget process are three alternatives. The first one, we hold our property tax rate at 71 cents and realize a 4.9% increase in property tax revenue for the same property. Thus, that would trigger an automatic election for voter approval. And by law, that budget would have to be submitted and approved by you by August 17th, rather than towards the end of September. The second option we would have would be to lower our tax rate, basically to the voter approval rate, which is enough to generate a maximum of a 3.5% increase in property tax revenue. Thus, there would be no election required. Now, since COVID-19's in the picture, there's a third option. So we could have council opt into what's called Senate Bill 2, disaster declaration from COVID, which would allow us not to use the 3.5% increase on the property tax rates, but we could go back to the old 8% for two, maybe three years. And that would require no election also. But to opt into this disaster declaration to use the 8% increase, that would require council approval. We don't have a recommendation right now. We're in the very beginning of the budget process. We need to figure out, you know, what our fund balances are going to be, and then come to you with a recommendation later. But I just wanted to give you an update on the change in the law, so you're not hit blindsided when that time comes.
Anyone have any questions? Very good, thank you.
I'm sorry, but on the COVID-19, it says you can use the 8% increase.
Right.
Is it 8%? Or I'm assuming it's up to 8% not to exceed?
Right, up to 8%.
So it could be 5% or 6%?
Right.
You felt necessary?
Correct.
Which would be a tax rate increase.
It would be. Effectively.
It wouldn't be a tax rate increase. We'd still be at 71 cents. It would increase the effective.
Yeah, effectively, it would have the same impact as a tax rate increase because property owners would pay more property taxes. It just depends on what the assessed, like if the assessed values, or say they come in or came in at 9% above last year, and we held our property tax rate at 71%?
Right.
Or 71 cents, then it actually would be a rate increase. But if it's under the 8%, it's just an effective increase.
Yeah, so you wouldn't, the tax rate wouldn't increase just the amount of dollars?
Right, correct.
I think that's an important distinction, though.
It is, because people don't realize the difference. A lot of times, we get it confused. It's confusing, but yeah, it is. Okay. Anything? Anybody? All right.
Okay, so that third paragraph there, a few weeks ago, the council voted to, there was like six point, they told me 6.58 million available for the City of Beaumont. And you all voted, remember, that we could make application and get 20% immediately, 1.3 million, and we have. So we expect to get that remainder, that 6 point, call it 6.6 million, okay? Staff, Tim Ocknechek, Todd Semino, other staff are saying they believe that we can utilize that money to reimburse ourselves for not only expenses, but for payroll for police, fire, and EMS related to COVID-19. So that's something we'll bring back to you because you're going to have to decide how to utilize, again, that money. If you use it for this purpose here in that third paragraph, it would reduce our expenditures, of course, in the fiscal year 2020 budget. And it would also increase the fund balance even more. So just something to think about. We are planning to use federal funds that, we haven't received them yet, related to the CARES Act, to fund the city's share of transit operations in 2021. What that means is, for example, this year, in the budget that you approved, you transferred 2.2 million to the transit fund. If we don't have to do that in 2021, that's going to free up, it's going to make it much easier to provide you with that budget. You did transfer like almost 2.6 million in 2018. You do it on an as-needed basis. How's the fund doing? How much cash do you need to shore things up? So you almost 2.6 million in 2018, 2.2 million in 2019. So you, almost 2.6 million in 2018, 2.2 million in 2019, 2.2 million this year. So if you don't have to find that 2.2 million in 2021, we're in better shape. Next slide. So what are the challenges now? Of course, uncertainty with sales tax going forward. It's 33% of our general fund revenue. Uncertainty of our industrial values, that'll come out in a few months. It's 14% of our general fund revenue. We have a labor agreement with our police officers that they will receive a 3.5% wage increase October the 1st. That's an estimated $915,000 new cost. Our contract with our firefighters expires on September the 30th. I'm going to skip to the next one and answer the question as it relates to the contract negotiations. We have issues, and you're aware of them, not to the full extent, but we have issues with the fire pension, with not only funding the pension, but y'all know that an actuarial group was hired out of Austin. An actuarial study has been completed. They're going to present those findings to the fire pension board tomorrow. And any changes that are approved would go to the firefighters. They have to vote on it. And then any changes would have to be approved by the city council. So we'll probably, hopefully, have that actuarial come before the council and lay out their findings, and again, what they're proposing to fund it properly, the pension plan. And I think depending on what happens tomorrow and how long that process is going to take, will determine if the firefighters want to negotiate, or maybe, maybe defer negotiations for a year. They haven't said that. I'm saying that. So I think we'll know more here in a couple of weeks. But there's a lot on the table, a lot to work through, but it mostly relates to their pension plan.
So the actuarial was asked to be done by the board?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So that's not something we did? That was the?
No, we brought it to you and briefed you, remember, as to potential issues, and I believe the pension board decided to have the study done, and.
Just see what needed to be done to be shored up.
And that's a good thing. Yes, ma'am. So that's another pending issue. EMS may need additional personnel and/or restructuring. And I want to say that our, if you go back a couple of years even, our public health department, public, EMS is in our public health department, okay? Max Nguyen is the EMS manager, reports to Sherri Olmer. However, we do have EMS units in a number of our fire stations. And the credit goes to the firefighters, the previous chief, Chief White, Sherri Olmer, Max, for making that happen. 10 years ago, that would not have happened, okay? But they've worked very well together. The firefighters have worked very well with our paramedics to allow that to happen. There hadn't been any infighting. It's just worked really well, okay? We, at full staffing, can have six units out there 24/7. Sometimes we have a seventh, let's say, operating for 12 hours. And it depends, the staffing changes every day. Right now, we have a number of people who are out, you know, we're all dealing with, you know, COVID. There's some other issues where, you know, some days, we may be down to four, which I don't think is acceptable. You know, you still have 12 fire stations, and you still have firefighters responding to those medical calls, but what we really want to do is have six staffed every day. And what we, when I say restructuring, we're looking at, we think we ought to have an EMS unit somewhere out on Major Drive near 105. There's a gap out there. We're thinking about maybe moving up a station that's located on Feeling, moving it somewhere around Dallin and Feeling, somewhere in that location. So we're looking at some things. We're also looking at, you know, this is just a possibility, maybe you have five EMS units staffed 24/7. Maybe you have two that are staffed from 7:00 in the morning to 7:00 at night. You know, we're looking at where is our call volume? How can we be more efficient? So I just wanted to put that on your mind, that we may add some employees in EMS, and you, again, would approve that in the budget process. Next slide, please. Okay, capital reserve fund. That's where, the capital reserve is a fund that you buy equipment, vehicles, facility improvements are listed in that capital reserve. We're going to come to you before the end of this fiscal year, hopefully sooner than the end of August, and ask you to transfer money out of that fund balance to the capital reserve, which will help us as we go into fiscal year 2021. You've done this before. What we're, we're going to have to be much tougher on what we approve, meaning, I think, because of where we are today, we need to move forward with items that we can all, not that we're all going to agree, but that most of us would agree, are needed and top priorities instead of something we may want to do. I'm talking about park improvements, facility improvements, equipment, because this year, we're going to spend probably, I think it's five points, somewhere around maybe 5.8 million. So we could possibly ask you to transfer $5 million to this fund. Now, we're going to go through it. Again, this is listed in your budget every year. All the vehicles are listed, the equipment's listed, the facility improvements are listed. So I'm just telling you, we're going to be strict on our end as to what we come and ask you to approve, and you'll see it'll all be lined out, every item. At the most, hopefully, it'll be 5 million. But just know your fund balance, let's say it's at 46 million right now, goes to 41. And the general liability fund, which is listed next, needs a million dollars. And again, this is something the council does on an annual basis. You look at how much money is in every fund, but how much money's in the general liability fund? How many lawsuits and claims have we paid? You know, some years, you may transfer 750,000. The next year, you may transfer over a million. It depends on how much you need at that time. But as we sit here today, we think it needs an additional $1 million for fiscal year 2021. So lastly, or second to last, without a federal declaration, which we have not received for Tropical Storm Amelda, all those expenses related to Amelda are captured in a fund. And we did this after, you know, Harvey, we had a Harvey fund, still do Amelda. So if you don't get that federal declaration, those various funds, general fund, water fund, solid waste fund, are going to have to absorb those expenditures. And right now, I think the total expenditure is about 2.8 million. So most of it's the water fund. So keep that in mind as well. Lastly, we have approximately $8 million left for street rehabilitation. So we, well, before I go into that, can we talk about water and sewer for a second? If you go to the next slide. Okay. We're working with our financial advisor on issuing $25 million in water revenue bonds in the next few months. This is no surprise. We've talked about this for a number of months. And we're working with our financial advisor on how this would affect water and sewer rates needed to service the debt. So I'm going to hand out, you've seen this, this is all, every one of these projects is in the capital program, which you've approved. Well, some of these are actually in the proposed, provided to you around May of 2020. This just tells you, you know, whether it's a water project, sewer project, a street project, we have water and sewer infrastructure. You can see the projected amount that we need and what the purpose is. Some of it's to start new construction. Some of it's an ongoing program that would continue to fund it. So we'll be coming back to you. Number one, you have to approve how much debt we're going to issue, over what period of time we're going to repay it, and then tell you how it affects water and sewer rates, and then you go from there, you know, whether you have to increase rates and how much. The council members that have been here for a while have gone through this many times. So steps we've already taken, we've held some positions from being filled outside of police, fire, and EMS. I've done that. Police, fire, and EMS account for 58% of our expenditures in the general fund. So you have about 40% over here to work with. And we have, as of last week, we had 1,230 filled positions out of 1,304 authorized positions. Authorized positions are positions you've approved in the budget. And the number of vacant positions change on a weekly basis, and I review those with key staff, and we've held some positions and plan to eliminate a few. And when we do that, please know, you try to do that, make those decisions, maybe to hold a position or eliminate a position, it's going to have the least impact on the public. At the same time, if you hold a position, I'm going to use one example. Let's say that you have seven inspectors in code enforcement, and someone leaves the city in that division, and I hold that position, because I don't know, we didn't know what was going to happen with COVID, and so you hold that position. Well, you're saving some money, but there's a negative impact, because you don't have as many inspectors across the city of Beaumont doing that work. But if you take police and fire and EMS off the table, again, it doesn't leave you much to work with, and you're doing it on a week-to-week basis, what positions become vacant? So, and I'm going to come back to that in a minute. Where we are financially, based on that roughly 1,304, I don't think we necessarily need to do that. I'm still going to look at on a week-to-week basis, we do that routinely, every year, every week. At the same time, because sales tax is still okay as it relates to what we budgeted, property tax appraisals, we went through that, some of those positions that are on hold, I'll probably release next week. I mean, if we know there's a negative impact out there to the public, I don't think we need to make some of those, some of those decisions at this time. I mean, we might, later down the line, you always have that as something you can do to cut expenses. I'll tell you, you know, in 2001, we had 1,407 city employees authorized. Today, we have 1,304, 19 to 20 years later, okay? That's 7.3%. We've downsized this organization. Why? Because, number one, we needed to. Number two, about 75% of what we do is people. It's wages and benefits. So not probably a lot of governmental entities that have done that, but we needed to, and it's put us in a much better financial position. We did also, we did not move forward with some projects in the capital reserve fund, specifically, a lot of facility improvements that were approved. We did this to preserve cash, not knowing the effects of COVID-19. And again, the general fund transfers funds to the capital reserve, as I mentioned earlier. So I can probably name five or six projects we didn't move forward with. We still might not move forward with those in 2021, because the more you move forward with, we talked about that 5 million, it just increases that number. So, all right, I mentioned earlier about the street rehab fund. Let's say we have about $8 million in there. Well, that study that the council authorized many years, where they did that assessment of our entire street infrastructure, and we were spending at one time, because that street user fee, you know, maybe a million, million and a half a year, and then they ended up saying, I think it was, I think they said you need to spend 5 million plus a year to improve your overall index or infrastructure. And we haven't been able to spend 5 million a year. We're spending more now, and we have a lot on the books. And so we've made progress lately, and I'm not making excuses, but Harvey set us back, and Amelda, and contractors we were working with, so things are moving much better now. So 8 million. So we could probably work with that 8 million over the next year. What that means is, you're not going to start anything new as we sit here today. You haven't even, you haven't been given this budget, have to provide it to you by August the 15th. But at this point in time, we're planning not to, we plan to borrow water, you know, issue water revenue bonds for water and sewer projects, but we're not planning to issue any new debt to start any new street construction, unless the council wanted to. And again, you can do that anytime, but it's tied to your tax rate. Your tax rate of 71 cents is divided, a certain portion goes to general fund, and say 22 cents right now goes to the debt service fund. So as we sit here today, we're not planning to issue any new debt to start any street projects, just more street rehab work.
Does that mean just those streets that have not been put into the budget or planned, or are you talking about no new added on top of those?
Well, all the streets that are listed in the capital program, you wouldn't start any of those. You'd finish Washington Boulevard, and you'd continue on with your street rehab work, which is a lot of concrete, you know, replacement and overlays. So you'd continue with that.
That's already approved?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So here's the catch. Remember, you voted to bring this same group in to reassess our streets. Tell us where, if we've made progress, tell us where we are today. So they started that, and they're nearing completion, and COVID-19 happened. And so I don't think they've gotten back with you yet.
They got thrown out of their office and had the home office and exploded them way back.
Okay. So what I'm, what they're going to come back with, and hopefully tell us, where's the index now? But how much do you need to spend going forward to make progress? I'm making up numbers, but do you want to, you want to, you need to spend 10 million a year? You need to spend 8 million a year? We don't know yet. So when we get that back, of course, we bring it to you, see what they recommend, and that's going to, I think, determine how much street rehab money you borrow the next time. And usually, we borrow for about two or three years at a time. So let's just say they come back and say, you need to spend $10 million to move this to improve your overall infrastructure, street infrastructure. That will determine a lot, how much, again, you borrow next time, how it affects the tax rate. And I'm telling you all that, because if there was, if there was a project in the capital program you wanted to move forward with, you need to be thinking about that over the next couple of weeks and tell us, because we can borrow anytime, but you got to, you got to be able to tell everyone how you're going to service that debt, how many years, and at what interest rate. Y'all have done this, but when you borrow that money, we'll be able to tell you, yeah, you need to increase taxes X amount, if at all. And then there's ways that we work with them to make that happen. Sometimes in the middle of the year, you can take cash and make that first bond payment. Sometimes, you know, normally, we borrow at a certain time, and it's before the budget's adopted, and so everyone knows what that tax rate is, and that portion going to the debt service fund, again, is already lined it out, where it's going to reservice that debt for, say, 20 to 30 years, whatever it is, y'all decide.
Kyle, so if there is a consensus or a majority of council that wants to move forward with it? with at least engineering, something like the Dalen Extension, you would need to know that by when?
I'd say within the next couple of weeks, three weeks, four weeks. We have to turn this budget into by August the 15th. So you wouldn't necessarily have to borrow, well, you would on that project, you're right. Let's say the council said, yes, we're going to move forward with the Dalen Extension Engineering, you know, so that's a sizable project, you're probably going to pay somewhere around 6% to 10% to engineer it, which is significant money. So you either have to borrow to pay for, that's an example, borrow to pay for that project, the engineering part of it, or you'd have to take cash out of the fund balance to pay for it.
That's about a million and a half dollars.
That's right.
So would we need to have a workshop on that, or how would you suggest that we move that project forward if we want to look at doing that?
Well, from a practical standpoint, I would, and I'm not talking to, I'm talking to the full council, ask yourself, do you think your council colleagues are going to support your project? Do you think you're going to get four votes to move something forward all by itself? That's up to y'all. And then all these projects are listed in the capital program, and I'm speaking for the public right now. You list out, all the street projects are identified with an estimated cost, all of the general improvements are listed out, all the water and sewer projects are listed out. So if any council member wanted to move something forward, for example, it wasn't, let's say, on this list, water and sewer project, you have every right to do it, you as a council approve it, and I would just say, let's try not to waste each other's time if you don't think you have four votes to move a single project forward. So our plan right now, the administration's plan, is to come back to you, talk about the $25 million, when to issue it, how it affects rates, and then not issue any new debt on the street and general improvement side for a while.
Okay. Explain, is that all?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Would you explain just, for especially people who are listening, so there's no confusion about what we're doing as far as not starting any new street projects? We will still be ongoing with our rehab, we will still be ongoing with the ones that have already been approved. Would you talk, speak to that just a little bit, please? Because I don't want it to be heard that we're not going to do any street improvements.
No, we're-
Because that's not the case.
Even though we're not spending or have not spent, we'll go back and check, I don't think we've spent $5 million per year over the last two years on street rehab work, even though we've had the money to do it. It's not, we want to, we're trying to push it as much as we can. To answer your question, we will continue and finish the Washington Boulevard project. We'll continue to do street rehab overlays, asphalt overlays, concrete replacement, brick, paver replacement. We'll continue to do all the things that we're doing today. We're going to continue that. That does not stop. What I'm trying to say is, we would not start anything new, a new-
Capital.
-capital street project. For example, a Dalen Extension, or Northwest Point Parkway North going off of Northwest Parkway. There's no funding to do anything new at this time. It's a continuation of what we have, and a continuation of street overlays and concrete replacement work citywide. That will continue.
And when you mentioned earlier at the beginning of the presentation about industrial values, valuations, was that meaning the valuation of industry and how we charge, or is that the taxes in lieu of?
The taxes in lieu of. So what the mayor's saying is, you have facilities like ExxonMobil and Lucite and other facilities. We have about 25 to 30 contracts with industry located outside the city of Beaumont, set up probably in the 50s or 60s, and they pay us, in essence, between 75 and 80% of what they would pay us if they were inside the city limits. So like the mayor said, they're industrial payments in lieu of taxes, and those values will probably get in, say, August. And so you don't know, as you're, again, by charter, we have to submit this budget to you by August the 15th, so I'm just saying, we don't have a clear picture of what those values may be.
So basically, when you look at the percentage, you might do the same percentage, but the amount of dollars is going to be different if their, if their valuations are up or down.
Yes, ma'am. And those 25 to 30 do go up and down every year. We just don't know how much.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Manager, the personnel for the last 20 years has went down 7%. I'm assuming most of that's funded out of the general fund, correct?
Mostly.
Okay. My question is, the general fund, and I don't have a slide in front of me, but I think it's gone somewhere from $70 million up to what it is now, is $130 million, if I'm not mistaken.
That's correct.
Is that, how does that compare to, I know this is kind of putting you on the spot on this, but how does that compare to like cities? That looks like a large increase to me.
It's doubled in the last 20 years. I don't know as it compares to other cities. Every city's different. You know, we're 180 years old, some cities are 30, 40, 50 years old, different infrastructure, different needs for police, fire, EMS. So I wouldn't necessarily compare them to even cities our size. Most of that's attributable to increases, wage increases, and most of it's police, fire, and EMS. That percentage of police, fire, and EMS, let's just say, if you went back and looked at budgets back in the 80s, don't know for sure, but I bet it's closer to 50% of expenditures, and it continues to inch up more and more. Why? Because they have labor agreements, state law provides for that, and our citizens voted for it back in the 70s. And, you know, so oftentimes, you know, police and fire are going to get an increase, sometimes when civilians don't. So those year, I mean, that's the reason that the budget primarily has increased over the last, I'd say, 50 years.
20 years is a long time.
So think about that. If we hadn't decreased, you know, that, say, 100 positions, if you take 100 positions today times an average with benefits included of probably $60,000, it's real money, it's a lot of money, and that's every year. So, and again, we took those steps because we needed to. We would, we would have had some financial, serious financial challenges had we not done that. So answer any other questions you may have. Our staff is meeting with different departments at this time. Again, we're going to present a budget to you before August the 15th, but this is an opportunity to, if the council as a whole, or four or more of you were in agreement to do something, this would be the time to tell us, because it's a lot of work, and we would need to incorporate it in there now. We don't want to turn in a budget to you August the 15th, and then you say, well, wait a minute, we really want to do A, B, and C, and that doesn't leave you much time before you would vote on it.
So we have to talk about it in here, because we don't talk about it out of here.
That's correct, yeah. And, yeah, that's right.
Okay. All right. Any other questions of city manager? Okay.
Thank you all.
That was a very good report, thank you.
Thank you.
But there's some good news in there, that's great.
There is, there is, and-
Because I really was afraid of what COVID-19 was going to do to us. And it looks not great, but it's much better than we thought it could have been.
Well, we thank you all for your support, our department directors, division managers are really just fantastic, and everyone gets along so well. I mean, it's a, it's a pretty seamless operation, I'd have to say. I don't think it could be much better right now with all of them, and a lot of us have done this for many years, and worked on these budgets for many years, so it's familiar territory, but key staffs work on. Again, we'll have something to you before August the 15th, I think August 15th, that you did, Saturday, maybe? Anyway, thank you all very much.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes our work sessions today. I will move to public comment. Now, that would be the time for any citizen who wishes to speak. If you would like to make public comment today, and you haven't already done so, please give the green light to the officer, and the city clerk will call out your name. As I mentioned earlier, please keep your comments to three minutes. The green light will come on when you approach the podium, and the red light will come on when your time's up.
Rakita Harper, Feland Boulevard, Beaumont, Texas. But this time, I wanted to, before we all dismiss today, I wanted to say again that I believe that Beaumont has some real serious work to do in terms of race relations, and I want to kindly but boldly challenge our city leaders to take a look within, because everything that we do out here, the way these people feel, the comments, you should see the comments on the Facebook page alone. Beaumont's going at it right now, but I really believe that it starts with leadership first, and it trickles down to the community. I'm not angry. I'm not angry at any one of you up here. I'm not angry at anybody who doesn't look like me. I think there are a lot of people who feel the way I feel. I think there are a lot of people who don't look like me, who also are not angry at people who look like me. But we don't have a platform a lot of times. These aren't the type of voices that you hear most often. Most often, you hear voices with chips on their shoulders. Most often, you hear voices that perpetuate racism and segregation, but there are a remnant of people in Beaumont and in the United States who really just want to move forward. And I believe those people should speak out more. I believe those people should take opportunities like the opportunity that I'm taking right now. But I'm challenging our city leaders to really search their hearts and try to work together, especially in times like this. I don't believe that either one of you have it in your heart to just hate somebody. I don't believe that about either one of you. But sometimes, I believe that we can react emotionally versus rationally and versus intellectually, and that should not be the case amongst our city leaders. And so I'm just asking you guys to really take a look within, take a look at those Facebook comments. People are ready for a fight. People are ready to see something go down, and I don't think that speaks well to our city. I would like to also propose that we do more to perpetuate the diversity that we have in this city. I agree with the teacher who proposed to give more to the arts, arts, public art that perpetuates, again, the diversity that we have in this city. I love each and every one of you guys, and I hope that we, I hope that we can meet again under better circumstances, and that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate it.
Albert Odell, 1998 Broadway Street, Apartment 3, Beaumont, Texas.
So, yeah, I'm here today because I thought y'all were going to talk about sort of the wider budget, rather than just the COVID-19 implications, and that's fine, but I want to at least advocate the possibility that we don't always need to arrest people just to take care of societal issues, right? I mean, there's been a lot of talk about the police recently, and for, obviously, that burden ends up falling upon communities of color, black men in particular, right? And again, police reform is worthwhile, we should still do it, but we should also consider other ways of solving those problems. Again, one of these things is that police departments themselves often go around talking, that they are tasked with trying to solve too many problems, problems that you just can't arrest away, right? So some more concrete things that I'd hope y'all would consider is, you know, instead of trying to send the police in to clear out homeless camps, to actually sit down and actually invest in homeless shelters and programs for them, when you go around and, you know, if the police are going around and arresting people for nonviolent drug offenses, that you go and create drug rehab centers so they can actually get the help they need to get over their addiction, rather than sending them to a cage. Another thing I would hope y'all would consider is to start sending, basically, social workers to all sort of nonviolent 911 calls. You know, it's not every instance needs somebody that has the possibility to arrest somebody. Again, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Odell. And we will go into the budget much further over the next couple of months. Thank you.
Tracy Haynes, 3910 Laurel, Beaumont, Texas.
Haynes?
Tracy.
Tracy Haynes?
She's not here.
She's gone? Okay.
Tiffany Simpson, 6225 West Gate Drive, Beaumont, Texas.
I have been a resident of Beaumont, Texas just about all my life. The internal systematic bureaucracy of entities a citizen has to go through just to get heard for a situation to be looked at and investigated is so disrespectful. Sheriff's Office Jefferson County website stated, "All complaints made against employees are taken seriously and thoroughly investigated. The mission of the unit is to protect the public trust through the thorough investigation of complaints concerning the department's employees." The statement on the website sounds good, but it's a total complete lie from Sergeant M. Ponder and M.D. Kegley at the Jefferson County Jail to the administration office building next to it, all the way to the Internal Affairs Division staff who thinks it's a game to give Beaumont citizens the runaround, because all those up top, including you all, mayor, city council members, law enforcement entities, and public servants of authority have allowed this to be the status quo. I have been trying to get a very serious situation investigated since May 27, 2020. I was directed to the administration office with the number 409-726-2500, which got me nowhere. A lieutenant and a staff inside the office, the same red tape of status quo, no one with real backbone to give true direction for citizens. I have called the Internal Affairs Division staff number 409-835-8478 for Liz Fochet or Fochet, and not one time has anyone picked up the phone. I went to the address also on the website, 1001 Pearl Street, Beaumont, Texas, 77701, between 8:00 and 5:00 on Tuesday, June 9, 2020. To no one's surprise, the office where the website instructs how you can give a citizen complaint, doors was locked with the number 409-835-8411 on the door to make an appointment. I called, and they stated their office is different from the Sheriff's Jefferson County Jail office, and if I needed to get ahold of Liz, can I continue?
You're not quite finished, you still-
Oh, okay. Liz Fochet, to call the administration office I just mentioned. I have no working phone or vehicle. Can any of you truly understand that type of limited resource, and how frustrating a citizen feel when these organizations are wrongly given the ability to place even more burdens and hurdles in my life by their willful neglect of following policy? Or is that too big of a stretch for your comfortable bubbles you all, mayor, city council members, law enforcement entities choose to live within in order for this type of dysfunction to exist? It's like a betrayal from people-
Ma'am, your time is just about, if you'll finish, please.
Who's supposed to protect me as a citizen? I can't call unless I borrow someone's phone, and it's not my phone, so therefore, I can't leave a voicemail to get a call back, and honestly, I doubt I would even get there by the way I have been treated.
Ms. Simpson, your time's up, but can, if you don't mind, I didn't want to interrupt you, but- you, but you, what you're quoting is the county and the sheriff's department, and this is the city and the police department. Are you trying to get the police department? If so, what I'm going to do is I'm going to ask you, since your time is up, if you'll visit with Officer Riley over here, right here, okay? And she, she can direct you in the right way. And if, if you are going to the sheriff's department, the county, and you should be going to the police department, but everything you mentioned are their numbers, their people, their address, et cetera, not, so I don't know where you need to go, but she can help you, okay?
Okay.
All right, and I'm sorry to interrupt you. Thank you.
Teresa Gore, 535 Parsons Drive, Beaumont, Texas.
I'm sorry, what was the name?
Teresa Gore.
Okay.
Hello, I'm back again. This time I'd actually just like to speak to the council about the mask ordinance, basically, that Houston is enacting. I'm hoping that Beaumont will follow suit. I unfortunately didn't get to see all of your discussion about the healthcare ordinance or the COVID-19 ordinance, but just as a person that has an older mother who's, you know, has health issues and stuff like that, and just me personally not wanting to even catch a mild case of COVID-19, honestly, the side effects and the prospect of having blood clots or anything like that, you know, people having strokes and the long-term health implications of it, it really doesn't seem like it's too much to ask to have everyone wearing masks so that no one gets sick, because any of these long-term health implications can actually bankrupt someone. Everyone knows that healthcare isn't cheap in the U.S., and quite honestly, all the other countries that have been wearing masks are doing much better than we are. So I think that's something that Beaumont should actually consider, because the governor has given his blessing that, you know, you can have businesses enforce mask-wearing policies. And while they're uncomfortable, they are doing good. And personally, I don't want to catch it. I don't want anyone I know to catch it. And I certainly don't want anyone to have to have some kind of lung transplant or a stroke or anything else, no matter what their age, whether it be in their 20s, 60s, 80s, whatever. So, that's all I wanted to say.
Yes, ma'am. I am going to make some comments about that at the end of the meeting.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's all I have, ma'am.
Okay, if there's no one else that wants to speak, I'll move to council member comments. And I'll start, I think I started this side, so I'll start with you, council member. Okay, I'll start over here then. Y'all want me to start in the middle?
Yeah.
Then I'll get all messed up.
Thank you, ma'am.
Council member.
Thank you. I would like to say that I reserved comments during the vote for the removal of the statues so that we could proceed with the vote and try not to delay it any longer than which it was delayed. However, my comments to the statue is pretty much the same of what everyone else had to say and the comments that are resonating throughout our country. That statue and many, many more statues that are residing in parks and across our nation are a constant glorified reminder of the negativity of a representation of a very, very dark time. Though it is history, all history isn't good history, and for a race of people that is constantly reminded of such a fact, it's, it's just not a good reminder. Being in Washington, D.C. several times, I've had the opportunity to visit the African-American Museum, and it's a huge museum that take, I mean, you can run through it in a day, but I've had the privilege of being able to visit it three times because there's just so much there. And then this past year, when I was in D.C., I visited the Holocaust Museum this time because I had never visited. Had a conversation with a visitor that was Jewish, and her statement was, there were so many people that perished. And likewise, there were so many people that perished on the slave ships. But one of the differences, there's a lot of documentation of the Holocaust, brutal, brutal killings. But for the slaves that came over on the ships, we will never, ever know how many lives were lost. There were so many lives that there's not even any documentation of it. And so when you go back to slavery and the horrifying history of it, to have to walk by another reminder that is so negative, that is part of your history and your life, and to be constantly reminded of it is not a great reminder. It's so much that has been said, and with everything in light of what's going on in history today, I've even made mention, three years ago, this vote would not have gone possibly the way it went today. But looking at what we're facing in America today, a change is on a rise, and there's been many deaths, many, many deaths. And I do believe this time, the death of George Floyd has resonated with this country and has truly, truly made a difference. And that was some of the comments that I wanted to make earlier. Also, I would like to give condolences to Mrs. Mary Flanagan family, who passed on last week, also to the family of Mrs. Gloria White. And Ward 4 and Beaumont lost Mr. Raymond Ambrose. Mr. Ambrose was one of those people that everyone knew in Ward 4 in the parage, and was one of those citizens that stood up for the rights of people in Ward 4, and a lot of African-Americans that have been very successful. And with that said, ma'am, that's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Council member Samuel.
I have nothing more to say.
Thank you. Council member Paige.
Thank you, ma'am. Follow up on Mr. Ambrose. He was a real leader in the community. I really knew him since I was a young man, which was last century. He was a fine gentleman and set a fine example. And one of his sons was outstanding athlete that actually got drafted in major, to play Major League Baseball. Mr. Ambrose was a fine man, and it's a real loss that he was 96 years old. Good man. Also want to compliment A.J. Turner and the guys, Michael Cooper and the others that helped put the Juneteenth program together. We normally have it at Terrell Park, but this year we had it at MLK Park. The turnout was really good considering COVID-19, but they did a great job bringing people together. You know, June 19th, a lot more people know about June 19th, but what it, for those of you that don't know the history, General Granger came to Gauston, Texas to let the citizens of Texas know that Abraham Lincoln had signed the Emancipation Proclamation in September of 1862. It just, it took that long to get to Texas. And so to say it had a dramatic impact on the folks that lived there, it really did. I'm proud of my country. We've done a lot of things really good. We've done some things that we need to work harder on, and done some things that were bad. But overall, there's a reason that the United States of America is a place people want to, to come, because it is a great country, and you do have the opportunity to go and do what you want to do based on what you think you can. Just to give you a little historical significance, we all are familiar with, we all should be familiar with Frederick Douglass, a great orator, abolitionist. He was for human rights, women's rights. It was actually this day in 1881 that he actually received a vote to be nominated as the Republican candidate for President of the United States. It was a Kentucky delegation that voted in 1881 for Frederick Douglass. And the impact that he had on our communities, universal impact that he had on the United States of America, was transformative, to say the least. And so when you go to sleep tonight, you hear me say, I ask you to pray for us, because we all need guidance. We all need direction, and it does make a difference. But when we put our, we get our hearts right, and we do the right thing, we can accomplish great things. And so help us, help us. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Council member Fauchet.
Thank you, ma'am. You know what, ma'am? I'm not, thank you. I'm sorry. No comment.
Okay. Councilman Getz.
Before I make any comments, I want to ask a question about masks, maybe to you, ma'am, or maybe to you, the city manager. I received a message that said that we were going to require the wearing of masks inside of tennis, the tennis facilities and other city facilities. Is...
We haven't made any decisions on that.
So nothing, nothing like that is...
No, I'm not going to talk about it today because some things have happened even since we've been in council.
Okay, I'll wait to hear your comments then. As far as my comments today, I was also glad to attend the Juneteenth celebration. Anytime you talk about the celebration of ending slavery, you invite me, I'm going to be there because I think slavery is a terrible institution. I left the Juneteenth ceremony, however, when it started to turn political, I was hoping that it would stay apolitical. It didn't. You know, people started talking about suppression of voters' rights, and various candidates started stumping for their speeches, and that's when I left. But as far as celebrating the end of slavery, I think that's a good thing to do. As far as the vote on the statue today, you know, that statue's been there 108 years. Now we're going to spend thousands of dollars moving it and into storage, and we're not talking about the homeless people that are there in the park. We're not doing anything for them. We're doing something to a statue that's been there for 108 years. If it makes some people feel better, hey, that's great. I hope it makes you feel better. It doesn't help us move forward, though. So, you know, maybe somebody will come and buy it and it can be put somewhere else. I'm fine with that, too. As I said, I think it should have been used for education. You know, the comment was made earlier that some of our history is not good history. Well, that's right. We have a lot of history that is not good history, and it shouldn't be forgotten, because when you forget your history, you might repeat it. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Councilman.
Thank you, ma'am. As we're coming to an end on the, the city charter updates, I would like to see if it's possible for us to start talking about some of the city ordinances we have. Mr. Manager, kind of have a short list here. The trash ordinance, motor vehicle ordinance, commercial vehicles parked in residential neighborhood ordinance, tents on public properties. And then I'd like to review agreements that the city of Beaumont has in place with TechDOT and DD6 and any other entity that you guys may be aware of, along with any other type of ordinance that affects the beautification of Beaumont. One of the, the challenges that I'm having is driving around and seeing the trash underneath the freeways and the underpasses and just the, our city just doesn't appear clean right now, and that bothers me. With that being said, I'd also like to look at the consequences of breaking these ordinances and making sure that the, the penalty is such that some of these violations stop. I'm not sure the proper way to do this. I don't know if we take them one by one, but I think it's something that we as a council need to start reviewing and making sure we're making forward progress. Next week, I will not be in Beaumont, and I would like to see if it's possible for me to video conference in via Zoom, if that's something that the city of Beaumont has the technology and the ability to do. Last but not least, on the statue that we voted on earlier, my intentions today were never to vote against the statue or the removal of the statue, as I did not. I simply want to make sure that we protect the statue using professionals that know how to do it, and that we, we sell or donate the statue to make sure that this does not sit in the back of a warehouse like I previously stated. And so I don't know, Mr. Manager, if it's possible for you to send an email out to the rest of council and just see if there's a consensus on whether or not this needs to be voted on again, or what the proper procedure is for making sure we move forward with the best of intentions on it. No further comments.
Okay, thank you. Do you have something?
I do.
Okay.
As it relates to council member Neil's comments, it would help us, okay, first, if you'll visit with the city attorney afterwards, as it relates to, you know, being outside of the city and participating in the city council meeting. I don't, I don't know the state law, don't know how that works, but I think he does or can find out and guide you. Second, if you could send me, the code of ordinances, you know, is this thing.
Yes, sir.
So if you could let me know specifically what ordinances you'd like for us to take a look at, we would treat that like the charter. We've done that in the past as well, where we bring it forward. This is, like you said, maybe garbage raids. So you'd look at that particular section of the code of ordinances. What do you want to change? And again, the council can amend the code of ordinances as you do all the time, anytime you want to. But I just need to know what specific sections do you want us to look at, and then we bring them to you one or two at a time, and you all make that decision. As it relates to the statue, our plan would be, we'll start tomorrow. We'll work with, we've already identified, Keith Folsom has, we'll work with someone to work with our staff to take, take it all down, not only the statue but the pedestal. It's probably 30 feet tall, the entire section. So you have the statue, you have the pedestal, you have that granite base, which is about the equivalent of three steps. We're going to remove all of it. We're going to store it in an undisclosed location that we own. And then I think it's a coming upon the city council to, as you have today, two of you came forward and said, hey, I want a work session on this. Two of you came forward and said, I want this item to be considered. So if someone comes forward, whether it's a museum or an individual, again, that's up to you. I think if two of you want to bring something forward for your, for the council to consider as a whole, we're going to store it safely until that time, until you all have another proposal. And then again, it's up to you what you want to do with the statue. So just know it'll be safekeeping until it's relocated, and that decision will be made by the city council.
And I might ask if... And I might ask if, um, if there's anyone out there that's listening that is interested, they could write an email or a letter to you and you could present it to us or CC the council, they don't have to, yeah.
Most of the time, the way it's working, it's worked lately is, is there's, they being citizens are sending emails to y'all individually or to the council as a whole stating, you know, we get them every day as it relates to maybe drainage or, uh, police, fire, sewer, you name it. So, if someone, if those come forward, they've come to me, I'll present them to the full council. And if they come to you, you'd handle them like you normally do, is it something you want to move forward and ask your council colleagues to consider?
Okay. Do you have anything? Okay, um...
I'm sorry, Mayor, just, I apologize, but for clarification, Councilman Neal, you're not making a motion then at this time that requires a second.
No, sir, I'm a vi- visit with the city attorney and see what the proper procedure is.
Okay.
Okay, alright. Alright, um, you said you didn't, okay, thank you. Um, just one second. Okay. Um, okay, first, I have quite a few things and I apologize, but these are all very related to the city and I think it's things that, um, we need to be aware of. First of all, I'm hearing from those that are involved in our census that, um, it's not going as well as we would like. So, I am going to ask everyone listening, uh, to please, it makes such a big difference in our public housing and the funding that we get, that everyone is counted. And I'm going to ask that anyone that's involved in, um, a neighborhood association or any community organization to please help other people that may not know how to get on the internet and do it or make the phone call. We really, really need everyone to be counted in the census. The last day to self, um, the self-count, I guess you'd call it, is July thirty-first and you can go on the census website and be counted, you can make a phone call, all you got to do is Google it. I don't have all that right in front of me, but call our office and we can give that to you. But, um, it's so, so important. After July thirty-first, there will be people going door to door. Um, but it's much more cost-effective if everyone, uh, does this on their own. And I just need to reiterate, I'm, I'm, I'm begging you to please, um, get involved in this and, um, get, make sure that everyone gets counted. We're lower as a county than we should be, the city is not, um, we're, we're better than, than some, but we're, we're not where we should be. So, please, please, fill out, um, it's, it's not going to take away any benefits from you, it's not going to affect you in any way other than it'll help your city and help us do things for, um, people that can't do for themselves because that is, um, that's part of what we get money for. So, please, do that. Okay, um, regarding COVID nineteen, um, there's a lot to say and, um, you know, I recognize that the deaths are lower, um, than they were, but let's just think about it like this. The last three days, we've had fifty-two positive cases in three days. We had sixteen on Saturday, fourteen on Sunday, and twenty-two on Monday. And if you go back this whole week, it's in the mid-teens, uh, fifteen, fourteen, that is much higher. So, and we can look at it that it's younger people, they're surviving, they're recovering, and there wasn't any deaths. But the other thing that we have to look at that I'm hearing, we're wanting to open the city back up, there's some that are very adamant about that. But the city can't open back up if they don't have the workforce to open back up. And I'm hearing from businesses that they have a lot of, you know, people that are out. If, because we are doing quite a lot of contract, contact tracing now, um, we should be doing it all the time and we've got, um, we've got people through Texas Workforce that are helping our health department with that. If you came in contact with someone and they said that you were in contact with them, you're going to be called and asked to quarantine for fourteen days. You might not be positive, but that just, it just trickles down and it affects our workforce. So, let's look at it like it is, too. We have to continue to follow the guidelines that have been put, put forth, uh, by the governor. So, with that said, I, um, I wanted to, I mentioned, uh, the governor's, um, press conference yesterday and I mentioned TNL and I stand corrected, Mr. Cooper. Um, I did say that, um, there was an Attorney General opinion, uh, being asked about, um, the opening up, but it's about face masks. Because as some of you probably heard in the media, there were some larger cities in Texas, uh, mayors that wrote to the governor asking if, um, we could be allowed to, um, to require businesses to require face masks in their organizations. Um, because he, um, did suspend Chapter four eighteen that gives us the ability, thus, us meaning county judges and mayors, to, um, institute, um, those type things. And so, I don't know why, but I think I would like for us to look into why, um, the Harris County Judge and the, uh, Mayor Sylvester, um, of Houston asked for this opinion. Uh, because I understand that they did, um, institute this in the businesses in Harris County. Um, I have gotten quite a few phone calls and emails about it from hospitals, from physicians, um, asking us to do it just while we're in this meeting, which I did not know that this was going to happen today. Um, it was, I was not talked to about it, but I understand Jeff Brannick, our county judge, um, put in an order to, um, to require, um, face masks in businesses. I don't know, um, we are in the county of Jefferson, so I don't know how that affects us as far as what we need to do. But my questions, I mean, I think bef- I think before we make a decision like that, we need to look at enforcement. We need to look at, okay, fine, let's say a business doesn't do it. In, in Harris County, it's a fine of a thousand dollars, is it a thousand dollars every day? I mean, do you keep fining them every day they don't do it? If someone comes into their organization and refuses to wear a mask, do they call the police to pick them up? I mean, I think there's much more to it than just saying we're going to allow businesses to wear a mask. But I do get that the medical, the Texas Medical Association and the Jefferson County Medical Association is stating that they would like for us to take this initiative up. I have many physicians, I've had three call me this morning, because I know a lot of them, asking me to do it. So, I just wanted to speak to that. There's some unanswered questions, how does the judge's order affect us, do we need to do the same to make it right? And then what do we do if, um, if there's pushback, whether it be from the business or from the citizen that goes into the business? And what's the difference in a business and, um, I mean, does that mean like restaurants, everything, I'm assuming so? But, um, we just need to look at it. So, those of you who've called me, it's not going on deaf ears, um, we are gonna, we're, we're going to look at it. But I don't want to say, yes, we're going to do this without doing a little research and figuring out how we enforce it. Um, and...
Turn your mic, Mike.
Turn your mic on, please.
The, uh, directive...
I can't have really a discussion, but go ahead, Mike can answer the facts.
I'm just, I just might, might have missed it. Judge Brannick did or did not issue something for the county?
While we've been in here.
He issued something for the county requiring businesses to require...
Just what Harris County did.
Just what Harris County did.
That's how I understand it. Um, breaking news came across my phone since we've been in here, I was not aware he was going to do that. And I did ask Carol through text to reach out to his PIO and she was not aware of it either, so...
And we do or do not know whether or not that encompasses city buildings?
I would think that it does because we're in, but then again, when we did our stay-at-home order, we had separate one because we have more businesses, um, than the county, obviously. Um, but, I mean, I for one do think that if something like this is going to be done, it doesn't need to be Port Arthur in Beaumont and Port Neches and not Gro- I mean, Groves and, you know, I think that it needs to be all encompassing. But I also think it's problematic in enforcement, so that's why I was asking the city attorney, I'll visit with him and, um, we'll look at, we have not seen the judge's order yet, it came across breaking news, um, on the phone. Uh, and, and I was actually planning to speak about it today because I had had so many calls about it just to kind of tell, um, our listening audience and the citizens who have asked me where we stand on it or what we're doing and what my concerns were about it, um, as far as enforcement. Um, just so we're aware, if we move into this, I mean, it's just like anything else. I think if you go into it too quickly without thinking the full circle, you're going to come, uh, you're going to have some issues, so... And, um, you know, what if you do, what do you do if the private business doesn't want to comply? I mean, you know, what happens, you know? So, there's, there's a lot of questions that we need to look at. But, like I said, I was going to speak about it before I saw this, but I did see this while I was in this meeting. I think it came through about three o'clock. Okay, so, with that said, um, I just want to read to, um, in the governor's press conference yesterday. Um, as we, and I'm going to talk about our reporting in just a minute, but as we move through this, one of the things that, um, we're seeing is our cases throughout Texas and certainly in Beaumont are spiking up over the last week, two weeks. Some will say, well, when you test more, you're going to have more positives. Yep, that is true, but they're real positives. So, that means that if that person goes out to a facility, wherever they might be, they could spread that to someone else. And that's the issue with the mask, I think, and that trying to protect that. Because we're also seeing, and I actually know someone that, um, are asymptomatic, they'd have no symptoms whatsoever. They get tested because someone in their household, um, has been tested positive and, um, and then they're positive and they might not feel great, but they don't have fever. So, you can't just say because you don't, you, you could test positive. We have to do something to make sure that this doesn't continue to spread so we can continue to open up our economy. COVID nineteen remains a fast-spreading virus and treatments are available, this is from the governor, not, not me. We must find ways to return to our daily routines and coexist. The early goal was to prevent hospitals from being overrun, we succeeded and hospitals have abundant capacity. Well, I will tell you that one of the, um, one of the organizations that has called me more than once is a hospital that is very concerned. As we are opened up, we establish safety protocols to minimize spread. If they are followed, they will reduce the spread. They include, one, at-risk persons should stay at home. That means if you're elderly or you have co- uh, comorbidities or underlying health conditions. Hands should be frequently sanitized or, better yet, washed. Persons should maintain safe distances, distances from others if they must go out and if people go out, they should wear a mask. Now, that is a little bit different in what the governor said initially, he didn't require a mask, he's still not requiring a mask. But as I'm understanding, he is allowing, uh, different municipalities and counties to, um, to enforce that rule. And I'm sure that's why the, the judge put this in effect today. But I don't really know what his says, I don't know if it's exactly like Harris County, but we will look at that. Okay, also, um, speaking of more testing, good grief, Carol, how many, Officer Riley, how many is there here? So, I have, um...
Um, primary care physicians are doing...
Yeah, so like if you present in a, a primary care, to your doctor's office and you tell them you don't feel good, they're going to do a COVID test on you, probably. And then we have multiple, and we are putting this out on, um, on our Facebook pages and our website, but there's walk-up, registration, Borden Chapel, McCade, Roberts, Sterling Pruitt, Roy Guess, um, Mc- uh, Forest Park Methodist Church, Kirby Elementary Campus in Sillsby, Plymouth Village, Cristo Ray, Northridge Manor, I mean, Stonehurst Apartments, there are so many, um, items. So, you want, do you, would you like to speak to any of this real quickly? Because if, I had a call last week and, um, I was told, well, there's nowhere my people can go to be tested. This was an organization, he said his people in his organization were telling him that he could not get them tested. There's multiple places.
Well, first of all, do, do call and check with your primary care physician because some of them are testing. Um, some of those on the list that we've put out are walk-up. You can just show up, but we ask that you have good contact information because one of the problems we're running into is being able to contact people later that don't give good information. We're asking that you have, even if you don't have a cell phone, see if there's somebody you trust that you can use their cell phone number so you can receive a text from the, the task force or from the health department. We need to be able to make contact with you and one of the ways they do that is by texting. So, have that available. You don't have to have, um, registration for those walk-ups. Now, some you do, so please, look at those different, um, different locations. Some will be walk-ups, some will be, um, call-in and registration. AFC, I know, has been doing stuff non-stop, uh, Med Express, we have a whole list, I can't remember every one of them, but, um, we'll continue to put those out and if you call three-one-one, they'll help you with that information, too.
Okay, perfect.
If I may, tying in with that, I understand that Beaumont Emergency Center actually has that test that, uh...
The rapid, we're not aware of that, I don't think.
Within fifteen minutes and, but you need to call, then, I just found this out today.
I'll have to verify that because when we've checked on that, um, the rapid ones, I haven't heard a lot of... Yeah, I haven't heard a lot of information on that.
Well, you just need to, uh, I just got this today, uh, from their person, uh, but you need to call and it's a fifteen-minute turnaround, uh, but you need to call.
My doctor's office. And I'm sure there's a cost, it's not, that doesn't mean it's free. Right, that doesn't mean it's free either.
Right, some of them you do have to have your insurance, um, card with you.
Yeah.
Okay, some have CARES Act, some don't, so you might want to read up a little bit on it if you have specific concerns.
Make sure and ask the questions of what your concerns are before you go.
Exactly, okay.
Okay, and then this is extremely important. I put out an update every day, every day. Now, I don't actually come up with the numbers, I have a lot of individuals that help me with those numbers, so... But one of the things that's very frustrating is everyone that wants to write about it says what they think it should say. Well, it did not add up. Why didn't it add up? And I really, please pay attention if you're on Facebook. Okay, so this top number is how many cases are today. This is ages, et cetera, et cetera. I thought this was great because this is what we use at the health department. The yellow graph on the second page, or in this case, the back page, but it's the second page. People are saying, it doesn't add up, they can't add. Well, if you look at the top, it says daily confirmed cases by date of collection. That is important to the health department and us at the Emergency Operations Center because the day that the specimen was collected is the day that you need to go on quarantine if you are tested positive. You're supposed to go on quarantine if you have a test before you get it back. So, what we're hearing is, okay, so today we had, what did I say, twenty, twenty-five new cases. So, right here on today, it's not going to say twenty-five new cases because those people, their collection was probably three days ago, four days ago, so it's, you're going to see it. So, what I have done to simplify the matter, we're going to leave this on here because this is how we do contract tracing. This is how we know, as people recover, um, how we know how many, that every, when they've quarantined in that fourteen days and then we need to ask them questions to see if they've recovered, recovery is so important because if you test positive and you've recovered, there's that, um, plasma therapy that can be given to people that are really sick that's been very helpful, I've talked about that before. Underneath it, we are going to start putting another graph that shows how many cases we had today. So, you'll see, you'll see how many positive. That really didn't mean a lot to us, that's why it's not on our information because all that is doing is telling you how many we got back today. That doesn't tell you when the person's specimen was taken, it just tells you when it came back. And depending on what lab it's sent to, some day, some take a day, some take two days, some take three days, some are the rapid test, very few of those. But anyway, with that being said, again, the numbers are not going to add up daily because these are when the swab was taken. This was, as it says, by date of collection. So, we will put another graph on here to simplify matters that will show how many got back positive every day because I think people are wanting to look at a spike or not a spike. But that really doesn't tell a whole story either because if you've recovered, you might recover quicker and so that, that spike might go down or up. But I did talk with, um, the health department today and we will start putting another graph on there. So, if you're asking questions as we put this out, please read the headings and see exactly what it says because there's a lot of information on here. And we've continued this, we started this on March twelfth and we have sent it out every day. Now, with that said, we have, uh, brought our EOC down to... Now, with that said, we have, uh, brought our EOC down to a level three, so on the weekends, we don't have staff at the EOC, as many as we had before, so therefore, on Monday, we will give the numbers for Saturday, Sunday, and Monday. We were doing the seven days a week, but now Monday will include Saturday and Sunday. So, I want that to be known because, um, I feel bad for the people who put so much work into this and, um, they're being told they can't add and they can't count because they can. Um, we just need to make sure we're reading the top of the headings, okay? Sorry, but it's how it is. Okay, so, that's what this is. Then, I think that's all I have, but again, um, please, um, practice everything we've talked about. We will continue to look at the mask issue, issue. Census, please make sure if you haven't called in or you haven't, um, gone online to register, please do, um, like I said, it won't affect anybody's benefits, it will not affect anything, it's not a matter of whether you're a citizen or not. If you live in Beaumont, we really need you to register, okay?
Mayor, could, could you just, uh, make some reference to, uh, just some of the funding that's affected by not participating?
Public housing is majorly affected, that's a very big one. Um, the money that we get, um, a lot, like the CARE Act money that we've been talking about today, so that was done on per capita, so that means that if they're gonna give X number of dollars per capita, and we've only counted 110,000 people and we have 120,000 people, and it's, do the math, I mean, they originally said it was 77, and then now it might go up to more than 150 or something, I mean, it's changing daily, it's just like FEMA, but-
Like EMDA, where we couldn't get funding at first?
EMDA, well, with EMDA, I was gonna ask that question, too. We haven't, we need a Nash, a federal declaration to get that funding, but it certainly will make a difference if we are able to get that federal declarat, declaration, because anything that has to do with an emergency, a lot of the funding is gonna be dependent on your population, and if we don't count everyone, it hurts us all. I can't say that enough, please, everyone, make sure that anybody you know, if you know someone that doesn't have a computer or they don't have a phone, um, please, please reach out to them and help them get counted, it's, it's extremely important. Okay, does that answer your question, kinda? Yeah, but the bigger part, the bigger part is, um, is, um, public housing, too. Okay, thank y'all so much for coming. Ms. Simpson, thanks for waiting, but, uh, Officer Riley will visit with you, and, um, thank y'all, and we are adjourned.